At this time, I'd like to call the meeting. The order, please stand for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM, 23rd day of August. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, interim Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Kopas, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary, Mr. Leo J. Smith, Jr., Assistant Superintendent for Business, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mitchell Piscopo, Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting's open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Cruden.
Right.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Finerty.
Here.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
Here. Mr. President. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board provided for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to adjourn to a closed session for legal personnel negotiating items. It is 8:03. The Board will return. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to reconvene the public meeting. It is 8:55. I'll ask you to turn to your agendas. There are some changes. I'll read them into the record. You can go along with me. We're going to start with our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are Items 1 to 61. Resolutions 45 and 54 are being moved to non-consent. Resolutions 40 and 59 are being tabled. There is a typo in Resolution 7. It should be, it should read 2017, not 2016.
What one?
Resolution number 7. There's just a change in a date. Personnel. Dennis, did I have the wrong?
Yes. On the third. One, two, three.
I am correct, right?
Yeah. He's.
Got it. Okay. All right, folks, so I'll start with the consent agenda, minus those changes of resolutions coming off. Do I have a consent, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Okay, on that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we will start with Resolution 45. I'll remind you, all our resolutions are on the bulletin board. I may not read the complete resolutions. 45, whereas the Bayonne Board of Ed is desirous to continue its Title I program. Every student succeeds Act ESSA. You'll see a list of staff members with their salaries being assigned to the grant, the Title I grant or the LEA grant. Once again, I will not read the whole resolution into the record. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second.
I second.
So I have a motion and a second on Resolution 45. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Abstain.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Now, it'll be 54. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education recognizes the need to adjust boundary lines. And you'll see the four categories and what they're from and going to. Do I have a motion on 54?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I second.
So we have a motion and a second on Resolution 54. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Abstain.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay. That'll bring us to our regular consent, non-consent, which starts on 62. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is authorized to reduce the number of teaching staff members employed in the district whenever, in the judgment of the Board, it is advisable to abolish any such positions for reasons of economy or for other good cause pursuant to NJSA 18A 28-9. Whereas for reasons of economy, the Board previously reduced the number of teaching staff positions through a reduction in force effective June 30th, 2017. Whereas in light of changed circumstances, it's the time of the reduction in force, the Board finds it advisable to rescind such action and restore a number of those employees to their prior positions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education, that the reduction in force affecting the following positions effective June 30th, 2017, is hereby rescinded by the Bayonne Board of Education, and you will see seven staff members. That the individuals identified on the attached list be restored to their prior positions, promptly provided appropriate notification of their employment status, and that the superintendent or his designee is authorized to provide the necessary notification to the affected employees. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
So that motion is second on number 62, but Mr. D'Angelo, you have a question.
Can I assume that they'll be notified within the next day or so? Or if they haven't been already?
Mr. Kovac?
As we have done each month, Mr. D'Angelo will be sending them a letter, giving them a call, and we'll be having them sign that contract hopefully tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on number 62. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Welcome back, yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
One quick statement. These people coming back along with the others, I'm very happy to see that happen. I do like to know that the 60 positions that were let go are still let go. These aren't, these aren't people that came back to a new position or that position. What happened was, right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe out of the people at this moment, and I think it's going to go down a little, at this moment of the people that were still riffed, we're down to, I believe, 29. But 29 people that don't have a position, not necessarily here. What happens is we recall people, and they took another position somewhere else or whatever. I'm talking about 29 people that we're worried about right now that still doesn't have employment somewhere. But just to let you know, when we bring people back like this, the 60 positions that were taken away were still taken away.
I don't understand.
I'll try to explain it again.
I don't understand what you just said. The last figure, if I'm correct, was 52 or 53 that still wanted to be recalled.
Correct. Well, it was 59. I thought 59.
Well, it was 59, but you brought back six last week.
But once again, for reasons of positions that were available that weren't part of that 59. All right, let me explain. Mr. Wilbeck was riffed, and Mr. Lawande left his job. We still have an opening, so I bring Mr. Wilbeck back. So it takes away one of those positions of the 59 people as far as people, 59 people let go.
Still down 60.
But it doesn't create, it doesn't bring back his position, the one he was let go of.
59 positions.
Still don't get it?
Can I answer that?
Okay.
59 positions for each one.
Well, talk it in a riddle here. I don't know.
We, as a result of the reduction in force and the budget constraints that were implemented, we have 60 fewer positions in the district. Those are positions. In terms of actual people, there's 29 that have not been returned. The difference, the 31 difference between those two numbers is the fact that there was attrition. Some teachers left and were not replaced, others found jobs in other districts. So as a result, there's only 29 people still out there that we would hope at some point to be in a position to reinstate. But it's, we're going to be operating the district going into this school year with 60 fewer positions.
That's what I meant to say. Thank you.
Okay. And we had that vote on that, and that passed. 63, approval to restore employees. Same thing, I won't read the whole resolution, but that the reduction in force affecting the following positions effective June 30th, 2017 is hereby rescinded by the Bayonne Board of Education. We have three custodians will return to work effective September 1st. Do I have a motion on 63?
I motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and second on Resolution 63. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes. How do you see them back?
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
64, whereas it's been determined that a vacancy exists in certain disciplines in the Bayonne Public School District. Whereas the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Michael A. Wonko, has recommended that appointment, that appoint of the below-named staff pending criminal history review, therefore be it resolved pending fingerprint verification, the below-named staff are hereby appointed at the salaries adjacent to their names on the effective dates indicated. We have two, four, six, seven staff members. It is on the bulletin board, Resolution 64. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
65, whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to make administrative adjustments and reassignments. We have Eric Ryan, 10-month assistant principal, Bayonne High School, going to 12-month assistant principal, Bayonne High School, $131,194, effective date September 1st, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second on Resolution 65. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
No.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Vice, trustee Ryan.
No.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
It passes. Resolution 66, whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to make administrative adjustments and reassignments. Kim Damici, 12-month assistant supervisor of special services, going to 12-month supervisor of special services, $124,466 is the salary. September 1st is the effective date. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on Resolution 66. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
No.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Whereas a vacancy currently exists in the district's assistant supervisor of special services. Therefore, be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent, the Board transfers the following individuals to the identified position pending advertising and permanent appointment. Mr. Mark Steinman is the acting assistant supervisor of special services. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
No.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
68. And I will read this one. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education sought and received approval to use coordinator/dean of students title in the district from the Hudson County interim executive county superintendent pursuant to NJAC 6A:9B-5.5. Whereas the Board of Education may appoint or transfer a certificated or non-certificated employee upon the recommendation of the chief school administrator pursuant to NJSA 18A Whereas the interim superintendent of schools recommends that the Board transfer the following individual, individuals to coordinator/dean of student positions. Therefore, be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education as follows. Upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent, the Board transfers the individuals identified on the attached list to coordinator/dean of student positions set forth on the attachment for the 2017-18 school year. That the affected employees will be promptly, will promptly be provided appropriate notification of their transfers. That the interim superintendent or his designee is authorized to provide the necessary notification to the affected employees. We have Frank Blunder, John Calcaterra, Linia Hayes-Santiago, and Edith Westby, coordinator dean of students, Bayonne High School locations, no change in salaries. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
I'd just like to say that, once again, I just appreciate the effort that went into this. From what I understand, I think there was something like 38 candidates, and many of them were interviewed. And according to the people doing the interviewing, that many, many would have been very good at this job. It was, it was a very, very difficult decision. The group came up with what they thought was the best four for this position. I just want to thank everyone that worked on doing the interviews. I want to thank all the people that put their time in it and would want to help us out in doing this position, and I say yes.
Resolution 69, it's a three-page resolution. On the second page, you'll see the transfer reassignments. On the third page, you'll see the new staff assignments for new employees. Do I have a motion on 69?
I move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second on Resolution 69. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
70, whereas state law requires that the executive county superintendent of schools review and approve any employment contracts for the district superintendent of schools and assistant superintendent. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education desires to enter annual employment contracts for a period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, for each of his assistant superintendents, Kenneth Kopas and Dennis Degnan. And an addendum to the employment agreement governing the employment of its interim superintendent of schools, Dr. Michael A. Wonko. Whereas Mr. Kopas, Dr. Degnan, and Dr. Wonko have each agreed to their respective employment contracts or addendums. Whereas Joseph Zara, interim executive county superintendent for Hudson County, has reviewed and approved each such document. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education, that the Board President, Board Secretary are authorized and directed to execute the aforementioned contracts and addendum on behalf of the Bayonne Board of Education. Resolution 70, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Mr. D'Angelo.
I can copy those.
Absolutely. As soon as we leave, I've got some outside. So that's Resolution 70. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic. I'm sorry, is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay. And our last resolution, whereas the, 71. Whereas the Board of Education has employees who are teachers, and they are assigned teaching responsibilities for the school year. Now, therefore be it resolved that Alan D'Angelo, presently a teacher at Bayonne High School, be released from his teaching responsibilities unless there is an emergent need in the district for the school year of September 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018. Be it further resolved that this resolution is hereby effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And do I have a second?
I will second that.
So on that motion and second, Resolution 71. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic is absent. Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. President, that is all I have this evening for resolutions, but we do have some questions. We'll let Mr. D'Angelo go first. Just up to the microphone, please.
I understand that at the workshop, it was discussed that the new prescription cards went out today, were put in the mail today. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So I would assume that all of the staff is going to receive it shortly, but what if they don't? Who should they contact in the Board of Ed?
Mr. Smith, do I have to answer?
Yeah. Call or email my office, Mr. D'Angelo.
Okay. Also, Mr. Smith, through one of the secretaries posted today that you were going to hold a meeting to explain or answer any questions about the prescription program on Friday, I believe September 8th at 3:30.
That's correct.
And I called Mr. Smith, I spoke to him when that was posted, asking why couldn't that be done during the school day? The first week of school, all the students are released, depending on high school or grammar school, by 1:10. They have a lunch, and then they have meetings all after that, usually from 2:00 to 3:00. Department and house, or principal if it's the elementary. Couldn't one of those days be freed up to have that meeting at 2:00 in the respective, well, I know it's going to be to high school, but I don't believe we can get everybody from the elementary into that auditorium. If we can, that would be good. If not, a site for the elementary teachers to go to from 2:00 to 3:00. Is that possible?
I would address that.
Yes.
I would like to discuss with the principals, who will be holding those meetings and workshops for the teachers, and see what their opinion is about moving the time. I don't know if it could be as early as 2:00, but we perhaps could move it from that, was it 3:30 or?
We made it at 3:30 because we wanted the elementary teacher to be able to get up here and, you know, find parking and get into the.
We have our convention Monday, so I'll ask them at that meeting, and what was the date for this?
It's a Thursday. September 8th, it's a Friday.
Okay. So I'll have an answer for you Tuesday.
Thank you. The last thing has to do with my resolution. This has been the same resolution for many years, but you've added a few things. Unless there's an emergent need in the district, that's new. How do we change the contract that I signed?
Mr. Clark?
The only contract that we're aware of is the collective bargaining agreement, which has specific language, and this goes beyond what the collective bargaining agreement provides for release time. You have some other contract.
I have a resolution that was done many years ago that we've gone by each year. That had no date on it. It was for the, for me as president.
That's, you're referring to the annual board discretion resolution. That's a one-year resolution.
Not according to the piece of paper I have. I'll send it to you again.
Send it to us. And just so you understand this one, the reason for the change from, say, last year's board discretion resolution is the fact that we are down 60 positions, and our enrollment has not dropped at the same proportionate rate. So the question is, if something comes about that's a necessary educational issue, you might be the only resource we have to address. It'll be like Superman. So that's why this resolution is like that, why it's a personal series. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll start, we have four people asked, wrote down questions. Carol Pistatis, 11 Pavonia Court, is an open question. And Carol, I'll remind you, we try and stick to three minutes.
I just have one quick question. I noticed from the last meeting and tonight, I didn't see that there was a VP assigned to Bailey School. I might have missed it, but is there a VP assigned to Bailey School?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Good, how are you?
Yesterday, I saw the resolution that Mark Simon is going to be the acting assistant supervisor. So he will be housed at Bailey for five days. In the past, the assistant supervisor was housed up at Central Office. We feel it would be beneficial for Mr. McCormick, teaches at Bailey and courses students, to have another administrator in the building. So that would be an administrator, that's going to be, he'll be there for five days.
So that'll assume your probability of having an acting VP? Or is that a position that will eventually get filled by another staff member? Do we know, or?
I couldn't answer that this time, but he is an administrator, and he will be helping out with whatever duties Mr. McCormick needs, as well as body of services for the professional services department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, Mr. Eugene Veeger, 78 West 48th Street.
I have just a few questions. First of all, my daughter going to high school right now, supposedly Arts Academy used to be, there is no schedule still. When it's going to come out, what teachers require for supplies, when we can get this information?
It's very good to see you. I will check with Ms. Bush. Ms. Bush was out today, but I will have an answer. I will give you a phone call tomorrow to get an exact answer on that. I don't know what's happening, I'm sorry.
Also, I want to ask, last time we were discussing about this closing Arts Academy, how much money exactly do we save a year? I understand $2.5 million was spent already, could have spent better base on whatever it's spent. How much money we talking a year? I understand, again, about little classes, one, two, three students, it got to go, tough times. But the rest of it, how much money are you talking about? $100,000 a year, 300, 500,000, what's?
I don't give you that exact number because it all changes with each class. If you recall, at the last meeting I gave you some examples where one class was running at about over $500, and another was over $1,100. So I'd have to add up all of those classes to get a total of the number for you. So I don't have that exact figure.
Is it possible to do it on that? Some rough figure, I'm not asking up to the bank, but? Roughly plus minus, plus minus 10,000, 5,000, whatever.
That's a lot of work to put together, and what's the purpose of doing that at this point?
Because there is no really reason to close completely with the way you're doing. You starting from the roof, building you from the roof, not from the foundation. You don't start building from the top, you start from the bottom. You want, you said you want to give a better education for everybody, right? Which is great. Why don't you start from the bottom? There are kids who barely making it, 70s, low 70s, maybe just go from year to year. Maybe they don't want it, and it's fine, it's up to them, really. But why you putting everybody in a mix where you're going to start losing your top students again like it used to be years ago? Up to last few years, top students would end up in high-tech, county prep, or private school. It was reversed.
I think the number that we've come up with of students who've lost the high-tech is about five during a year, about five.
But these five students, probably some of them went to Ivy League school. Those students who bring in, who graduate who are not in the academy or.
That go to Ivy League schools. Who also go to Ivy League schools.
That's right.
I understand.
And Mr. Veeger, I want to thank you for your time, but we're over our three minutes, and Mr. Kopas will get back to you with that other answer. Next up is Ms. Leslie Caswell. There's an, just an open question on professional development, 151 West 20th Street.
At the end of the last school year, teachers were on a freeze of attending outside professional development. Come September, will we be able to attend outside professional development? Can we speak to the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our last question, Keisha? Keisha V. Steam, Steamwork Studio question? Yes, no, maybe, left? Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Okay, Trustee Desmond, is there a second? Trustee Cruden? So we have a motion and a second to adjourn public meeting. Trustee Cruden? Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Gerilic is absent. Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.